It's 10 o'clock. Calling to order the regular meeting of the Gillum County Court. It is May 7, 2025. And we have established a quorum. We have our three court members here and we will now have the flag salute.
I am to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty in its heart.
Welcome. Are there any additions or revisions to the agenda? Okay. We're going to wait five minutes because that's where we noted that the budget hearing would begin. So if we have, I'm going to go over a few items in correspondence just that are informational items. So that we've covered those and then I'll just watch the clock when we're 1:00 or 10:05. We have an operational support grant fund report from Summit Springs Village in your packet. That's item 4.3. We have a revenue report for fiscal year 24, 25, third quarter, Gillum County Public Health. Did you want to speak on that at all later? Just the other item on the agenda for you. Okay. There's a treasures report for February 25 and March 25. And I will tell you that the transition to Cassell, I don't want to speak for our finance and treasury department, but I noticed some issues with some duplicate entries on our revenue expense report and some of the balancing. So this is going to be a process to get everything in balance. For example, I looked at our SIP funding and it showed a lot more than we've actually received. Well, that was a duplicate entry on a payment that happened when the transition went over from shafts to Cassell. So we're working those bugs out. So each department is going to be looking at their own revenue, looking at their own expenses to pick up on any errors. And this will not happen next year because we won't have a transition in the middle of the year. So just working through it, that when you have an $80 million budget and 70 employees, it's a bit more complex and three different programs that you're working in. So.
So are they working through getting the numbers in that the auditors invited?
Yes, yes. Yep. Okay. We're getting there. Let me see what else we can cover. We could probably cover the consent agenda if there aren't any major issues on the consent agenda, which include 5.1 minutes from April 16, bill's pending review for April, and child abuse, multi-disciplinary act intervention, Kami Grant's submittal request for April amen. All in favor?
I will second the motion.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. One more minute, we'll just have to wait. I think that's about all we can do in the meantime. There'll just be a little bit more discussion on the remaining items. So. Beautiful spring day, no wind.
I was working.
This seems to be working good. Okay, it is 10:05. The public hearing for the fiscal year 25, 26 budget is called to order. The county court would like to hear from the public on the budget during this hearing. The public hearing is your opportunity to comment before the county court makes a decision. We want to hear what you have to say. We want you to give us your point of view. If you wish to comment on the budget item, you will have the opportunity to do so. All persons commenting must be recognized by the judge. Please speak clearly and slowly and state your name. And city for the record comments will be limited for two, three minutes. We did not have anyone sign up. Is there any interest? Okay. No? All right, conflict of interest. Is there anybody online? I have more of a script to go over. I just wanted to check. Okay. Regarding conflict of interest, at this time, I will ask some members of the county court if they have conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of your conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate or abstain from the hearing. And I'll begin. I must declare an actual conflict of interest due to my own compensation and that of my family member, which is my daughter, who was within the Gillum County budget. However, I intend to participate in the hearing.
I must declare an actual conflict of interest due to my own compensation and that of family members within the budget. I intend to participate in the hearing.
I must declare an actual conflict of interest due to my own compensation and that of family members within the budget. I intend to participate in the hearing. Okay, the briefing itself was prepared by our budget officer, Brooklyn Griffith, and it is in your packet. We've had a chance to look at the briefing and the resolution. We have no public testimony. We have one more opportunity. Okay, we will now close the public hearing. Now for consideration is the resolution 2025-05, adopting fiscal year 25, 26 budget, making appropriations and imposing taxes for fiscal year July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. We have a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to approve resolution number R 2025-05, adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes in the amount of $88,481,705 and a tax rate of 3.8450 per 1,000 of assessed value of all taxable property within Gillum County.
I will second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Brooklyn.
Thank you. Okay, just for the members of the public, now that the budget has been passed, within the budget is an increase of the homestead rebate amount to $1,500 for qualifying household. Okay, we have the rest of correspondence and public comment. We'll begin with item. Let's see, let me make sure. So I'm going to hold off on you, Mr. Bissonette, because you have a letter. So I'm going to let, we'll address you, even though you signed in first, we'll address you when we get to your specific item. Okay. So we'll go with Shelley Johnson, Condon. Did you want to speak?
No.
Okay. And Sarah Kirby McKnee, would you like to speak? Okay. Come on up. And state your name and your city.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Sarah Kirby McKnee, Condon, Chief of Two South Jefferson. And I just wanted to comment upon the draft of the childcare survey. I think it's great, you know, both through both town halls, we know that that's a big point of interest for the public. So I think gathering as much information as possible is a great thing. We're also kind of working on drafting our own for, you know, shooting ideas for the after school program. And although it might be unsolicited, I just, after looking at the draft, I wanted to ask a few questions about why some questions were maybe omitted or missing. There is a question in here that asks about if your provider is a childcare center, what do you do when that child is sick or when that center is closed? Who do you take your children to? And I just think we need to expand that because we are asking families with a range of children from newborn to middle school. So I think what also should be included, if your provider is an at-home provider and they are sick and they can't provide care, what do you do for your child then? And then even further, when the school is closed for holidays, vacation, whatever it may be, snow days, what do you do for your child during those days? Because if it's going to include all these children, I think we need to cover all those bases. And then the only other thing I noticed, there's, I think, twice on page two and page six under types of care that you ask, what would you be interested in or be most likely to use? One of them includes sick childcare, which is just a little bit misleading because under DELF, the Department of Early Education, Learning and Care, sorry, or in-home centers or in-home providers and centers, you cannot have sick kids. And then even at the grade school level, you cannot have sick kids. They get sent home. So I just think it is something we licensed, we can't provide. And so to have that as an option, I think it just.
It's not an option.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an option.
No.
But that's just.
Except for if a spouse takes care of their child. Those are the things we're trying to figure out also in addition.
And that's totally fine. I just sat and I was like, wait, what? So I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I, thank you. I think this is.
Yeah, and thanks for, I did know both of your comments. So we will take those into consideration. Just remember, it's a draft.
Oh, yeah, no, of course. That's why I thought, well, it's in draft mode. I just put those there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sarah, real quick, I thought, isn't, aren't they putting or working on a, something to put out to the public? Like a survey or something now?
Yes, yeah, it's going to kind of ask about, we have a little bit of a rough draft in terms of pricing, but we don't want to reveal that yet until we kind of get.
I was just curious when that might, it's coming out soon.
Coming up, I would say within this month would be the potential possibility. April was loaded down with a lot of cookie, vacuum, the computer. But we are, we are out of that zone. So we're back to it.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sheriff Bettencourt. Discussion regarding Gillum County Emergency Services Funding, Emergency Services Funding.
Thank you. I have no materials, but as most of us in this room today, we've been in the county and been involved in volunteer organizations, either as committee members or board members or 4H leaders, teachers, whatever. And I'm just bringing forth some of my observations. Over the years, I think all of us have recognized a decline in volunteerism. It's difficult to get people to volunteer either because of the required training, required hours put in for that training or whatever is usually state required for the most part. And I guess it doesn't matter whether it's the, you know, one of our volunteer organizations, including Booster Club or 4H, school type things, Elks Lodge, I mean, just go down the list. We've probably all been on them and had difficulty in getting members or participants in those. My reason for being here today is because the same thing is happening in emergency services. And I feel like, you know, priority wise, if we don't have good medical and fire services to our community, we're kind of doing a disservice. And I don't think it's the county court's responsibility to take care of this. But I think, I wanted to bring it to your attention and plant a seed that seeing what's going on in our communities around us, other counties within our own community and whatnot, I think the county is responsible to come up with a plan. And if that means getting together with EMS, fire, then that's probably what we should do to figure out what we're going to do in five to 10 years down the road. And whether that's funding or ways to get people involved, I don't know. I don't have the answers. But I do know that we have communities close to us that don't have EMS currently. And that's a struggle. And that, that is a strain on the, on the whole community. And, you know, I mean, we're talking about people's health and livelihood, lives in some cases. So I'm asking the county court to maybe get together with our EMS and fire providers, fire departments. And I understand their districts, not so much the EMS, but, and figure out ways.
Are you suggesting fire and ambulance or also health districts?
Fire and ambulance are my concerns. They're the volunteer groups. I guess, you know, our health districts are the same thing. However, I, so I guess what it comes down to is volunteer versus paid.
Yeah.
Our health districts typically have paid people and don't rely a lot on volunteers or our EMS and fire do. So how are we going to pay for those people? I mean, people just aren't stepping up to get back to the community like they used to. I mean, they're obviously are. I would say that everybody in the room here today is a volunteer of something. But it's just getting those numbers and getting everything done successfully, I suppose. So it kind of the way things are going is it's, people won't do things unless they're paid to do.
Absolutely.
Well, I, okay.
I think, I think that it's, it's kind of like typical, like in Condon, you have the same people that volunteer for everything. And after a while, they suffer from volunteer burnout. I, I think we, I speak for the Condon ambulance because I'm on it, but we have a pretty good group of volunteers that, that if we didn't have those volunteers, we, our ambulance service would probably be non-existent.
Yeah, in fact, since 3rd, May 3rd or something, eight callouts. And it is an excellent group and they do amazing, but the age.
I think last week we had, what, yeah, seven in one week.
This morning.
Sixty, 24 hours.
Yeah.
There we go.
So there you go.
I think I was on about three of them.
And it's, it is mainly the same people responding. You know, I mean, others are involved but can't because of work or whatever. But in any case, it is. But the thing I'm thinking about, and I know there's a couple in the room that are older, older than me, I think.
Oh, shut up.
Anyway, but there are several that have put their, you know, everything into.
Would you be talking like something similar to the ambulance service area plan? You know, like we did, some kind of a plan similar to that for the.
Well, that's, that's required.
Yes, I know it's required, but I mean something.
I don't know. Like I said, I don't have the answers. Yeah. If we could get a meeting, the ambulances really aren't a district. They don't get tax funds or at least they weren't intended to. So funding could become an issue to have a leader keeping it, you know, training up and running efficiently and those kinds of things. Where is that funding going to come from? And I'm not saying it has to come from the county, but.
Right.
Well, and like you said, the challenge is a lot of the volunteers over the years had full-time jobs and could do some of their training. The training has, I don't know, double, triple, quadruple, whatever. So it's tough for somebody that has a full-time job that wants to volunteer, even to get the training time and stuff. And that's kind of where we're headed. And it's just, like you say, it's getting to where the volunteers that are dedicated and doing this, we're, we're going the other way to where we're not going to be able to do it that way.
Right.
And I think that it's, I know I plan to try to reach out to some of the large businesses and, you know, at that end, but it's something that's, that's coming fast and changing fast.
Yeah.
Shannon, yeah.
For, for our ambulance service, we have six.
Yeah, because the people in Cyberland can't hear.
Here, I have a chair for.
We've been getting some feedback, sorry.
I didn't mean to join your party here. So I'm Shannon Koppick. I'm from Condon and I am the co-coordinator of our ambulance service here. For our ambulance service, we have six EMT intermediates, which sounds fantastic. Only one of us is under 60 years old. We have a huge contingent of our ambulance service that is over 60 and a number of us that are either over 70 or approaching 60. And so I think our community, if we go out, we need to let the community know that there are a large number of people that are probably going to retire in a few years because of age. There's nothing that says that we can't be EMTs until we're 80, except that our desire wins a bit when we get called at 2:00 in the morning to respond. And so I think that the community really needs to know what our service looks like, at least on this end of the county.
Right. Okay.
Well, and Steve had messaged me too, but there was some legislation, but it was like a thousand dollar tax credit. You know, that helps for trying to get somebody to do some of this, but it's still not the answer. And it's, we got to, we got to come up with something.
The other thing that would be helpful too is the ambulance service is under the health district and the only people on a district board that can't get paid if they're volunteering also are health district board members. So Cindy Hinton, who responds to a huge number of calls because she's on the health district board, the ambulance service cannot pay her. And so she's truly volunteering her time for what she's doing and she can't be paid for it. And so to me, and again, I'm sorry, I'm stepping on your party here, but I think it would be good if somebody could get something going in law that says just because you're on a health district board doesn't mean that you can't respond and get paid as a volunteer, a paid call volunteer.
I don't believe the ambulance is happy to be on the health district board. I mean, just so I'm grounded in it.
The ambulances, at least in my experience, can be formed in three ways. Either under the health district, under a fire district, or as a private ambulance service. And so that's my understanding.
Okay. So do we think we want to just get people together? That would be Gillum County's role so that they can have the discussion that needs to be.
Yeah, I think there's, there's three ways that I see, either, you know, with all of these committees and organizations and everything, either they end, they go away, if people figure out a different way to do it, consolidate, or, you know, the county funds it. So, you know, I mean, consolidation is, is an option too. If, you know, as our community hall meetings suggested, we, we get rid of the north-south divide. But, you know, to me, that would be more efficient and better for, for the community. But that, that's another option that would have to be discussed.
Would either of you like to work on this? Since you both have a, a deep interest and you're both on.
I, I will, yeah.
North and south. Oh, okay. So, so you could work with Anya to maybe get a meeting together to start the talks? Would that work?
Then I don't, I don't know.
Because I don't know, I'm here, Shannon, it's, it's getting the younger people to start volunteering.
Well, it's, it's looking into the future because we can wait until everybody's burnt out or retires and wonder how we're going to provide service.
That's not there.
Or we can start planning now and get some things in line at least for, I guess it's just starting the discussion.
And I think also, when you get both, both ends of the county at the, at the table at the same time, you might learn ways that each do things that lift barriers that you see potentially, or maybe some feedback from other, other counties.
I think the biggest thing right now is just getting the communication out there that, hey, this is where we're headed and we're trying to get ahead of it. And maybe we could get something with Steve.
Yeah. Press could help us.
One other little piece of this, in 2001, Gillum County started the fire services board, fire services board, went forward, hired a fire services coordinator, which Shannon did for, for many, many years. It had a great purpose. It served its objective, I think, very, very well. I'm your liaison to the fire services board. The county court appointed the sheriff many years ago. So I feel it my duty to let you know that I think the $80,730 the county gives the fire services is no longer beneficial for the program with changes and different things. And I think that some, that that money should be directed possibly potentially to assist in something like this or maybe some of those districts that are saying their tax dollars are being withheld or whatever. I won't get involved in that conversation. So anyway, that's my recommendation on that. And maybe we need EMS services coordinator or something like that in its place, potentially, just a little.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to change our order a little bit because 4.2 Pebble Springs oven grand request regarding their annual reporting and the Rick Bissonette's issue in Mayville with, with his request regarding marijuana sales will be held together because our planner will be able to address both of those issues at the same time. So I'm going to move the capital investment grant presentation, Condon Arts Council, up on the agenda. So you're up. Good thing they're there for you. Sorry.
All coming in.
Good. You're ready.
My name is Margaret Tocaghi. I'm the president of the arts council.
I'm Stephen Allen and I'm the board secretary.
I'm Michael Saitz. I'm on board directing programming right now.
I'm Claire Stewart and I'm also on the board.
Mason Eubanks, newest board member. Just a kind of little overview or.
Yeah.
We're taking, all right. I'm just going to start in 2021. A group of us came together seeing an absence of arts programming for kids in the community. Schools have been pretty hard hit for several decades. And a few of us had kids that weren't particularly competitive. And so we just thought we'd start this organization, really not having any big aspirations. Since then, the demand for our programming and just the strength of the organization has really grown significantly. So we now own two buildings on Main Street, the Liberty Theater and the old. So we now own um two buildings on Main Street, the Liberty Theater and the old mortuary building. Which we call the Arts Building. Um, and we're looking to take um really our organization to the next level. And um are excited to be here today, so we'll talk a little bit about it. In a nutshell, um, we bought the Liberty Theater on its hundredth birthday in two thousand twenty-two. And the Sweeney Building um the next year. The both the buildings are in significant need of repair. We would be happy to give you guys a tour. When we started looking at it, the needs really kind of piled up. So we started working with Kelly Nonprofit. This was actually prior to the courts involved with Kelly Nonprofit. We were introduced to them through um the architect who we've been working with about a year prior to the courts involved with Kelly. And started a capital campaign and concept and really we're looking for a lasagna effect. So federal money, state money, county money, city money, foundations, local donations really kind of you know. So no one entity is kind of caring more or expected to do all of it. And and really trying to leverage our our relationships. We've gotten some programming grants from several foundations. We've made strong communications connections with uh working community foundation, Rand House Foundation, Port Family Foundation, Oregon Arts Commission. There's more.
So many. We really have been very blessed as an organization. The program that we've been able to provide with all of that funding has just been outstanding.
And in addition to working with youth, we've started working with seniors. Um, in addition to working with just kids from Condon, we've been working with um kids in Arlington, Spray, Mitchell. We have both Wheeler County and and Gillum County. And our our programs bring in people from actually all the towns. So or or we're serving them anyways. Uh, the most recent program, for instance, we're in the schools. We have a partnership with the North EST. We, you know, we've provided four workshops in Arlington, in Condon, Spray and possible. And I think Margaret knows that a group from Arlington to do ceramics um in, calling it the Forge Group, right?
Yes, the Forge Group. I mean, but then we've also been going to their schools um frequently as well, so.
Yeah, the, and then recently the um Condon Can um strategic plan for the twenty fifty vision of Condon but having emphasis on our programming and facilities. And the town halls at the Gillum County Court held, I think, with the top. From Fort Michaelo's group, um, and her data was um, what was going right on the strategic plan was delivery theater and um the restoration of the facilities, so.
Yeah, I think we did hear feedback about um restoration of historic theaters as well, so.
Yeah. So um, we're here asking for a million dollars. Uh, we're working with um uh architect Mark Cedar, who I think is on the line now.
Is he Elgin? Is he the?
He's done, I think he told us he's done eight historic theaters. He did the Elgin Opera House is one of them.
Will you speak a little bit about that? Cause that really was one of the things that made me think, wow.
Yeah. So that project, I think they began in the early uh the two thousands. They're still going because it just keeps improving. But that was an old building that was in a similar situation from what he's told us that it was in significant disrepair, ordering on, not being there at all, falling apart. And they basically transformed it into a beacon for that whole area. So um it's connected, I think, to actually City Hall. But they have regular performing arts um and theater performances there. They've been able to actually draw in people from bigger and some of the smaller towns around Elgin um to participate in those programs. And they're putting on really kind of fantastic shows now. I think they're spending several million dollars a year on on the performances and activities.
Great, sharing her, sharing from your application.
Yeah.
And uh Mark Cedar is on the line as well.
And we're also fortunate to have Jeff Schott. Um, he's donated his time to this project, which was really generous. Again, there are going to be some architectural um changes. We're really envisioning this as being a campus. So what Jeff is helping us with is creating pass-throughs from the Liberty Theater into the Arts Building. You can kind of see it through this um drawing here. That area there would be a pass-through. So where the men's bathroom is now, instead of walking in the door and seeing a toilet, you'll be you know, you'll be able to walk through both buildings and really creating a a kind of flow where if we have a performance in the theater or a class in the Arts Building, there will be the ability to kind of go between the two. Um, kind of like a concession's area in that front lobby, which will be kind of the main entrance. This is just the architect's original ideas. We will still have to go to the city of Condon. And and kind of open all of this. This is the general idea of what we're shooting for. We did find that behind the Liberty Theater sign, there is a window. We found a photo of that. People see our family, which is really remarkable.
Yeah.
Um, and we think that that was used when the theater was probably doing like vaudeville performances. It was built before the town was electrified. So they were probably using that, you know, sunset um light to actually light the stage. Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to say we, um, so my part on the board has been on the programming committee with Wendell and Margaret. And we've been really trying to improve um the number of musical acts that we bring to town. And we also have a hope to be doing some more children's theater programs. We've done one in the past.
In the three or four.
Okay, sorry. Um, and yeah, I think that this facility would really improve our opportunities for bringing people. We have, at this point, we have more people than we can handle coming, partly because of the state of the what is currently there. So I think that improving, having something improve for people to come to. Yeah, we'd be able to have some of them critical shows and um more consistent acts coming.
So this is the intention of your gallery would be to fit people's works in there to showcase, is that what?
Yeah, that's kind of the idea. Um, right now, that space is being used for a weekly ceramics group with Margaret.
The right hands, yeah. The center part, I think, was also, we were kind of envisioning for more of the displaying people's works around the event and more of a gathering spot in that one. But we would still have the art classes going on on the Wednesday.
Yeah, the building would become very versatile. Like you could have an artist in residency. Uh, have an actual artist stay there from time to time. There's, I mean, there's a lot of projects within the building.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, but it it really could be quite a versatile space in having an art gallery space, but also working spaces. Um, and obviously our our large show at the theater.
Couple of questions I have. Do you own the mortuary building outright?
We still owe about um ninety thousand dollars to the swings. We're we're, but we are on the deal.
Okay.
Own it.
Okay.
But we're, we're still paying off the note.
Okay. And you have a means to do that?
Yeah, that's part of the request that we are making today. So um I think it was about seventy thousand dollars that we were asking for the court to pick up. We do have a another grant out for Oregon Main Street, four hundred thousand dollars um that we're expecting to hear back in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
But the overall project from what Mark and and Jeff kind of arrived at would be two point two five to two point five million. I think with these, because of that lasagna funding model, I think we're going to be able to get there. We did pledge in our application that we wouldn't be back before the court to ask for more money until twenty twenty nine.
I was just, yeah, I was wondering about that. I mean, it's it's a, it's a big ask, but wow, it's, it's a it's really
It's going to need all of it.
Yeah, it's gonna need all of it. So uh my grandfather and my dad used to walk in from the Shannon Ranch to go to the living there. So, yeah.
Yeah, everybody's got a story. Everybody remembers their first time in the theater. Um, you know, a lot of people also have stories and memories, not so, you know, pleasant maybe about the mortuary building. And I think the ability to really kind of transform that, that property and make it into a place where, you know, like we're already doing after-school programs for kids. It's a place that we can really kind of meet those needs or identify it in the town halls.
Yeah.
And through the Condon Can process.
Right. We'll get to, go ahead.
Um, Stevie, you mentioned, I see the Oregon Main Street was four hundred thousand. Were you saying that you think you might get another additional one coming?
No, that.
That's, that's the one.
That's the one.
So these are pretty much just the one time. I mean, this is, this is impressive, yes.
One time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty much everybody, okay.
Yeah. It took us a while to get there. We were thinking of coming before the court even last year, just and everything in its own time. And I think now's the time, especially after this you know, this uh town halls and the Condon Can exercise, we really heard what the community wanted. It kind of makes sense, future. Um, you know, if if we have Senator Wyden or Merkley come to town, if you post that, if you post weddings, community events. And I think this is a space that could be really opened up for a number of purposes outside of our own uses.
Right.
That's impressive.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any.
I think it's a well-done grant application. I think it's a worthy cause. And I I also think of history, like Boyd and Sandra Harris in Condon and their vision for the arts um to carry that on.
Yeah.
Um, and others, not just them, but um I think it's a a piece of our um culture. So and I think we have people that want to build that. And I think the money that we have through the strategic investment programs, I feel should be we we want to show something for it. That's how I feel. This is what we did with this windfall we had for a period of time. And um our historic buildings in Condon are, I mean, if we don't preserve them, it's, they're gonna be gone. So.
And I think when, when I first got on the school board, back in the two thousands, the first thing we had to set was music and arts and stuff like that because we we had no choice. So I I think to have that venue to bring that back so that kids can do that, it's great. So, right.
I just say to follow up on what you're saying about Boyd and Sandra Harris. You know, I'm just been involved in this board for a couple of months and I have a graduate degree in fine arts and I've been involved in arts organizations in lots of different capacities. And I'm so impressed with what Steve and this group is doing. And I do see it as a sort of descendant of coarts. Um, cause if people were here in Condon in the eighties and nineties, they knew how much coarts did. They did theater, music, art shows and engaged everybody of all ages. They would pack that theater. Everyone would come to those art shows. And that was at a time when the schools were cutting music and art. And if I didn't have that experience with coarts, you know, I don't know exactly what kind of, it would have been a lot different uh childhood for me in Condon. And so um I think this is really important, especially at a time that's so isolationist in our culture and society to sort of bring back some semblance of that kind of community spirit. And I don't think it's disconnected from what Gary was talking about. You know, you engage people in the community in one way and they become interested in other aspects and sort of becoming um parts of other areas of the community. So, you know, I think the arts is really powerful in in that capacity.
Great perspective. Thank you. Good. So any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. And we'll be making a decision later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, four point two, I'll let the audience get settled first. Four point two Pebble Springs Avangrid request to discontinue annual reporting requirement. Um, we will both have uh Carla McLean, who was our planning um department representative today and Matthew Stelmark.
Yes.
From Avangrid. So, go ahead. Go ahead, Matthew.
Thank you. I appreciate the time and the attention of the board. Um, my name is Matt Stelmark. I am Senior Permit Compliance Manager for Avangrid, representing Pebble Springs today. And um I started with Avangrid about a year ago. And my responsibility is to ensure compliance with permits and permit conditions for all of our operational projects. Um, Pebble Springs is located in Arlington. And they have a conditional use permit from Gillum County. That um permit includes a condition for annual reporting. And I could find no record of annual reporting. And so I started correspondence with the planning department to understand if that um provision had been discontinued. And neither Avangrid nor the planning department could find evidence of that. Um, and so I wanted to come before the board to request documentation of if that annual reporting requirement could be discontinued.
Okay. So now we'll hear from Carla McLean um to address what you've determined in your research of this matter and your recommendation.
Good morning, Judge Patnod and members of the court. Um, Carla McLean, uh Acting Planning Director, uh City Boardman. Um, Stephanie Case, who is your former planning director, has been on medical leave for about a month. And this question came up and and then she left. And so we've not done as much investigation on our side as I would ask. I think there's a couple of things that I will share. Um, the little bit of limited work that Stephanie was able to do before she departed from medical leave kind of confirms Matthew's position. It doesn't appear as though anything has ever happened under this condition um for this annual review. Um, I kind of had an aha moment sitting here thinking about this and pulled out the final decision documents. And while I think it's great that he's here in front of the court this morning, um, I think final resolution of this is a planning director resolution and a planning commission resolution. Um, the the final decision that was issued in two thousand and six is a planning commission decision. And so I think that the actual request to amend the CUP needs to go in front of the planning commission for final resolution. I'm I'm not opposed to to his request or how that would move forward, but um, I I'm just trying to think of what the proper process would be for this to happen.
Um, right.
I I have a couple other questions too. I, there's a a short memo in your record um that I also provided. One of the things I want to confirm is, did we, did the CUP ever get formally transferred from PPM, the company that was issued to to Avangrid? I mean, I think, I think there's a couple of questions that have come up through this. So I um I don't think this is the only conditional use permit that as your planning department, we need to be looking at and reviewing and identifying if there's other things that need to happen. Um, and that's, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that that things haven't been happening historically. We don't have a real clear vision of what has been happening. And and we want to make sure that we're properly managing those conditional use permits on the county's behalf. So um, I appreciate the question very, very much. Um, with Stephanie not being in for, it's been a month now and she'll be, hopefully she'll be back next Wednesday. And we'll be able to reengage and and better answer these questions, not only for you, but for for Matthew and Avangrid as well. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this point in time, but I, I kind of think that that's um, th- that would be where I'm at at this point in time. And I'm happy to to talk to why why my response is is what it is. And again, I'm kind of having this revelation here today as we're having this conversation.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts or comments or?
So the conditional use permit was originally PPM Energy. Then did it transfer to Evadrola and then to Avangrid or how did that?
Yeah, that would be the question I have. And I don't have access to the same records that Stephanie does. And so she started some investigation. She's been on medical leave. We'll be able to better answer those questions after she gets back next week. Um, but again, most of those Um, but again, most of those things would be, would be activities of the planning department and or the planning commission. So I think if we're looking to do a modification to the conditional use permit, that would be an app. If we need to modify the conditional use permit, that would be an application by the applicant to the planning department. And then it would go through the planning commission hearings process to modify the conditional use permit. Um, it may be, and again, I think we need to look at how the conditional use permit is written on a couple of those factors. Um, the transfer of the conditional use permit can be done by letter. At least that's the normal course of, of business when you have a conditional use permit that transfers from company A to company B to company C. You usually, company A transfers it to company B. And I think the question is, is did, did PPM transfer it? And if not, we need to figure out how we go back and correct that. Um, and it may be that if it didn't get transferred, we just need to work with Almond Grid then to again just evaluate and come up with a clear process how, from a tracking perspective, we would transfer that conditional use permit that was legally issued and, and they have been operating under it, for all intents and purposes, as far as I can tell, as the conditions require, I think it's just, we, good question. Somebody asked a question and we just need to work, work our way through it and answer those questions.
Is that it? I wonder if that's a condition of the other wind projects. Cause I know there's a conditional use permit for waste management and they, you know.
Yeah.
Right. Right. The, the, the waste management conditional use permit is I, and, and I, I, Stephanie has been digging into that and I, I've been, I've been um, just kind of rah rahing her in the background. That does have a very clear requirement that there is a review. And I, I understand it. It's an every five year review with some interim check-ins. Um, and that is up, it's, it's currently up. That, that is a activity that will be happening this year as I understand it. So uh, when I step into Stephanie's office on her big whiteboard, it says waste management CUP review on it. So I know she's working on that and that's very much, um, she knows that's on it. But on the wind pieces, I don't think we've had that, we've had no reason to look at them since we picked up the program here last July. But Matthew's inquiry, I think raises a really good question, not just for this CUP, but any other. And I would say renewable energy CUPs. I don't know what all has been issued for Gillum County. I mean, I know that when I was at Morrow County, I worked collaboratively with, I believe it was Suzie, when Suzie Anderson was the planning director on the uh, in Benergy, I think it was in Benergy project that's on the county line. Actually, part of it was in Morrow County and part of it was in Gillum County. That was a CUP. Um, there are some other CUPs that I know we are now having conversations with applicants under, about repowering. And those repowering, because they have a point six six megawatt uh, turbine on top, and as they repower, they're going to a two or two and a half megawatt. It's actually pushing them out of a conditional use permit threshold into an FSEC threshold. And so that's, that, those are interesting conversations too. So CUPs we used to hold in the future may no longer be CUPs at the county. They may actually be FSEC site certificates.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'm inclined to say that um, Matthew works with, with Carla. And then Carla comes back to the county court after you've worked out what you recommend we do from here. That is the plan at this point.
I do have a few follow up comments to that. The conditional use permit, at the end of its annual reporting requirement section says the annual report requirement may be discontinued or required at a less frequent schedule by the county. And so I believe that was the origin of our
I understand.
Appointment here today is to request from the county. The other is the other is regarding the transfer. So PPM Energy is a Almond Grid subsidiary. And it is common in the development of these wind projects. It takes a, a long time to develop and construct these projects. And often at the time of a CUP application, the project entity doesn't exist. And so applying for a conditional use permit sometimes happens in the name of a existing company like PPM Energy. And I believe PPM Energy is still a subsidiary of Almond Grid. I want to look into and follow up on this request. But I believe there is a Pebble Springs LLC as well. And so it, I think it's a worthy question for follow up.
All right, so.
Sounds like some of these are just making sure the formalities.
Right. I would, I would um, suggest that uh, make sure that everybody agrees that um, Carla or Stephanie from our planning department work with Matthew and then come back to the county court with a recommendation if that's necessary, once you've done your research or if the planning commission and planner can make this um, this ruling on the reporting. We would need a report back either way.
Absolutely, Judge. Yes.
Okay, so you can take it from here until we hear from you again.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Do you know how to get in touch with um, with Carla, Matthew?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Okay, next item is um, Rick Bissonette. I'm gonna have him come up. I do, go ahead and come up. But I think the best order of this is to have the planning department explain it through her research uh, once there was a voted, a vote, what Gillum County did and when um, with, with different types of marijuana sale distribution according to zone. So if you could give that background, then Mr. Bissonette can, can address us with his letter.
Judge, uh, glad to. I, I don't know that I can give you the timing of it. I do know that it was probably about a decade ago when the state kind of made, changed some of the, the uh, statute law. Um, it was a ballot measure and we went from medical marijuana to recreational marijuana. So sometime in that era, as counties, we were all asked to make a determination. Are we in or are we, are we out was kind of the, the big tagline. Gillum County made the choice to be in. Um, you authorize certain marijuana uh, activities um, uh, in different locations, different types of activities, and then in different locations throughout the county. Um, those requirements are specifically found in the uh, Yumitilla County, uh, or excuse me, Gillum County uh, zoning and development, zoning orders and development code at section eight point two seven oh, which is about marijuana businesses. Specifically, um, but there's a lot in here. Um, it, there's actually appears to have been a, a lot of thought that has gone into this. At that time, the conversations were around processing of marijuana, um, growing or production of marijuana. Um, the selling of marijuana, whether that be a wholesale function or a retail function. And there's a great table uh, in the development code and it is on page, if anybody wants to follow along or, or look at this later. In the development code, it's on page eight dash forty seven. And that table identifies, uh, identifies the zones. So the zoning, the zoning, um, the zoning orders provisions, where, where these things each apply. And then whether production grow is authorized, whether processing is authorized, or whether retailing is authorized. And there are three kind of categories that you can be authorized for in each of those sections. One of those in the table A means that the, the decision that would be issued to allow it is an administrative decision, meaning the planning director can make that decision. Some of those uses are approvable through a conditional use permit, meaning um, it has the potential to go in front of the planning commission for a final decision. Although there are provisions in the Gillum County uh, code to allow a conditional use permit to be issued by the planning director with notice. Um, and then P is actually, um, one might assume a P means permitted. It actually means prohibited in this table. Um, where Mr. Bissonette uh, is proposing this activity is in Mayville. And Mayville is a rural unincorporated community. So you can in Mayville do production or growing. You can also do processing. Both of those are allowed through a conditional use permit process, which would allow for notice to adjoining landowners, notice to affected agencies. And then again, potentially, um, and in this case, probably most likely, a public hearing in front of the planning commission for a final determination. Retail use however, is prohibited. Um, it is my understanding that his desire is to do a retail operation in Mayville. And the planning uh, department has issued a stop, stop work order um, for the changes he has been uh, doing to the structure that he wants to run this retailing operation out of. We've also had a request from Public Works uh, to provide a sign off on an access permit. At this point in time, we've indicated to um, the Public Works Department that the facility is under a stop work order and does not have um, land use approval to do anything with an access permit at this point in time. I think that's a pretty good summary of where we are from a planning perspective.
Where is marijuana sales allowed in the county?
Uh, sales.
Industrial?
Yep, both in industrial, in your limited industrial zones and in your general industrial zones. Now, and I, I'm gonna be honest, I don't know your map well enough to know where those are. Um, but we could certainly dig into that a little bit, but Mayville does not have those designations. It is a rural unincorporated community.
Thank you for that background. Do you have any questions of Carla before we address Mr. Bissonette? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I um, worked this on it. I reside in Mayville, Oregon. And, and I've done a lot of research. I've asked several times because they've asked me to put in a conditional use permit. I tried applying. I've gone here to the county to give them a conditional use permit in the county does not exist. They told me, okay, go ahead and fill out the land use permit. Well, that land use permit doesn't allow me to do what I want to do. And I, I, what I'm asking the court to do, I followed all this stuff from section eight. I found another article in section four of the RC Rural Unincorporated, or Unincorporated Community Zones. And I read down, and in number six, it says marijuana production and processing approved also for marijuana business standards incomes in section eight. I read section eight. And in that sense that I can have in there, but it's a zoning issue. It's all it is, it's a zoning issue. I am not trying to cause problems. It's a very, should I say it's, I will tell you that I, I did put a dispensary in Sumter, Oregon. And it was very, very lucrative. It was one, just one dispensary. Sumter City, every quarter made anywhere from thirty five to fifty thousand dollars off of my sales at seventeen percent. What happens, I have to pay the state twenty five percent of all my sales. They then issue you a check every quarter of seventeen percent of that. It, it's gonna do nothing. It, it doesn't bring in riffraff what people think. It doesn't do that. A lot of people think that it's a very high upper end. I'm trying to tap into a billion dollar industry. And, and I, I'm doing it because I knew I, when I put it in Sumter, and I had to move over here nine years ago, my dad fell and broke his hip. And I had to move over here. If I would have known then, I would have tried to put it in then, but I thought Gillum County opted out. And I thought the city opted out. So I didn't even bother. And then I found out three months ago that you have it, but every roadblock I get, it's like you can sell, you can have it, but you gotta be in a certain area. And I go to that area, well, it's not zoned for that area. Or if I go here, it's not zoned for that area. They're putting a stop on it, but yet the people voted it in. And they're trying to stop it. And all I'm asking the court is to take a look at it. I'm not asking for any money. In fact, I'm trying to gain you money. That's a lot of money. And I'm trying to enhance the area and making Bayville look, this looked ran down. And, and there's nobody opposed to it out there. They think it's a great idea. Everybody I talked to says, yeah, this would be awesome for the county. And I want that conditional use permit and nobody can produce it. The land use is totally different between it. I've read it. The city's got one of conditional use permit, but it's not, the county doesn't have one. We gone on Ellen, the clerk.
Okay, no, the planning directors that are planning, that handles our planning.
Yeah, she's the one that told me to go ahead and fill out the land use and we'll use that as your conditional use permit.
So we just heard from her today. And what I heard her say is that it's Mayville is not the zone that where there is, um, it, it's prohibited in the zone. So unless there were a zone change, that's what I am hearing. Is that correct? Carla? The sale, excuse me.
Yeah, the sale. I could grow it. I can process it, but I can't sell it. So what good is it do to grow it?
Okay.
I don't want to do that. I want to be able to have it zoned so that I can have the retails and make it for
Okay.
Make the availability for the county to have revenue.
Okay. So Carla?
Yeah, so, so the, the couple of things I will respond to there. The county, the county has a singular application form for its land use planning process. That is the land use planning application. You complete that and you also have to address the narrative. But the bottom line is the, the use he is requesting to be able to sell it is not allowable in Mayville in that zone. So if he wants to do this in an industrial zone, he could do that. And if he pursued that as an option in, in an appropriately zoned area, uh, where, where retail use is allowed, it would still require a conditional use permit. And again, with a hearing in front of the planning commission to authorize that. The standards that are applicable are both the conditional use permit standards in chapter, I don't, seven, chapter seven, as well as the standards in chapter eight. So any application that he would submit would need to show how he complies with those. And at this point in time, there's not a path to approve a conditional use permit in the location he is proposing.
Sorry. Listen, as a Mayville resident, would the county consider rezoning? To allow, allow of retail.
Carla, could you?
Sure. So, so absolutely. Um, the county can initiate a rezoning process or a landowner can initiate a rezoning process. So if, if Mr. Bissonette is interested in applying for a change in zoning on that property, he could make that application. That is an, that is an amendment to the zoning map. Um, it does require a full hearings process in front of both the planning commission and the, and the county court. And may or may not be approved.
Okay, so there's a way forward.
That's what I'm asking. Is we have a rezoning so that we can have.
So you could, you could apply.
I can apply for that. Where do I apply for that?
Carla?
You need to reach out to the planning staff to be able to do that. We can, we can tell you what, what the process would be to accomplish that.
That through you? Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Then that's what I will do.
Okay.
That's what I was asking the court, that we could get it rezoned to where I could put that in.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Carla, for that information.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, under unfinished business, we have consider approval of intergovernmental agreement for strategic investment program. SIP distribution of Leaning Juniper Wind Power two B uh, project, community service fee. That's a mouthful. So this process has been um, a long, but interesting. And um, I've learned a lot through this whole process with the SIP agreement. And I think it's gonna be a good foundation for things to come. with the SIP agreement, and I think it's gonna be a good foundation for things to come. So part of the SIP agreement requires a I G A with the taxing districts in the code area of the project. And we have received a sign off from all of those. We are going, I'm going to the North Cemetery District next week for that approval. And then, but I'm asking for your approval at this time, so that we can get this to Business Oregon once the cemetery signs off. The, the issue is if we do not set the distribution, Business Oregon will do it for us. So that's, it's, it's a, the community service fee on the other two projects was in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand each, and then it's distributed by the percentage and on page two under One B. So So how did you determine that amount? Okay, the amounts were determined, the assessor's office helped us with those percentages. And we determined them, the general general basis of the split was so that the taxing districts would not lose any tax that are affected by this through the agreement. Because over the, over time and watching the negotiations and some of the negotiations, some of the agreements were written such that the district lost money that they otherwise would have received, had we not done the SIP agreement. So that was the basis, to make the districts whole. We took some of the percentage from Gillum County that they were receiving in some of the other agreements and redistributed it to the other districts that are affected in Code Four. So that's North Health, North Fire, Ork, and Cemetery. And also in the community service fee, specifically in the statute now, it states that you have to address EMS and fire in this distribution. So Is there any discussion?
So basically, you just need?
Yeah, so we just need to have, there's a suggested motion, and it just is an approval of the I G A.
I moved to approve the intergovernmental agreement for the Strategic Investment Program Distribution of Leaning Jennifer Wind Power Eleven Two B Project Community Service Fee, contingent on the missing signature being obtained, and authorize the judge to execute the agreement.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. And just clarity that the missing signatures is the cemetery is all. Okay, that item is complete. Okay, now we can discuss the Annual Childcare Needs Survey. This is a draft, it's in your packet. Like, you know, we talked about this at the last meeting.
I also, can, I'm sorry, can we, do we have Daylene and?
Oh, sure.
Can we skip them?
Let's move them up. Let's move to?
Then we can go back.
They are under seven point four, under new business, discussion of agreement between Gillum County and South Gillum County Health District. Come on up. And do you wanna start, Leah? How do you wanna go about this?
Sure. So it's, it's time for our annual agreement, and in looking at it, Daylene noticed that the program elements were not the same as the original agreement. And then we had, in discussions earlier, I think early on, we had discussed increasing the time on that agreement. It just never has happened. And my recommendation would be for, we're in our biennial with the state, and they, their funding is based on the biennial figures that they put out. So that would be my recommendation for them to, to go to a two-year contract and have it be the same as the biennial. And Daylene can talk about the, the program elements and how some of them are gone and?
Well, yeah, in the original agreement, it just spells out the different program elements, which at the time, when we signed the agreement and we started, those were the program elements that were being implemented. Those change over time a little bit, so there are some that are listed that are no longer relevant. And there are new ones that have come in as well. So my recommendation was to maybe just have a more general statement of the program, you know, just instead of listing them individually, just talking about program elements in general so that it wouldn't need to be updated as those changes happen. And it would be kind of all inclusive as things come and go.
Yeah. So, so Daylene, if we, we put in there that the, the program elements as listed in and go back and reference our agreement with the state O H A, because those change all the time, as we know.
Right. So I think that's a good way to go about it, because I think they send the revision.
Probably seven or eight, yeah.
So if we keep up with, you know, the, the state I G As, then that clearly lists with each document which program elements are being implemented in Gillum County.
So the contract would just need to go back and reference that original agreement and and any amendments?
Yeah.
Is that how we would, the original agreement and any amendments during the, during the term of the, the contract? Yeah, we'll send it through, through legal to be sure. It's good, but yeah, that sounds a lot simpler.
So we would go start this year, and then it would go, that contract would go a few years.
So it would go starting July first of twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven, and that would align with the bienniums that the state sets as well.
I'm comfortable with that now. So thank you have years under your belt now to see, you know, a few years to see, okay, now we can extend this contract. Everybody's comfortable on your feet and Gillum County's too, so.
And talk about your renovations up there all. I, I took a tour. I went up, Daylene and I worked on that, so I got the tour, and so it, it's, looks like it's a great space now, so.
I mean, it's nice, but it just all, all looks the same now, rather than the one area.
So, yeah, so now there's a nice little, there's an A D A bathroom off of the surgery instead of the little tiny. And the laundry's in there, and then Daylene and?
It's given Ashley a nice, some really good space that we haven't had otherwise to be able to work in and space to bring others to the office and have somewhere to sit and have a conversation. We also double it, you know, as a conference room, staff meeting room. Board meetings are happening there, so, you know, even though it's, it's large, we're, we're utilizing it in many, many different ways. But it's definitely given us a little bit of elbow room, which, you know, we've been tied to some small quarters for a little while.
Good, I think, I, it just.
So it just needs to go to legal counsel to have it revised.
Yep, so to, to your contract and a general statement of program elements referencing O H A contract and any amendments during the course of the contract.
Yeah, and I would just suggest to look at the dates. I think, at least when I read through it, it was a little bit confusing in terms of when the initial agreement started versus like year to year.
Oh, so just making sure that, like in the first paragraph or whatever it references, it, you know, originally started in twenty twenty-two or whatever, and then within the document, making sure that we're addressing our current year, because I think that there were different.
I see.
Yeah, because I think they just amended the original one to.
Continue it?
Yeah, just a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
I wanna get up and visit the place too, so.
Do you have any?
No, I don't.
Since you're sitting here, how about the summer program? How's, how's that going?
So we put an ad in the paper last week. We have had one application for that position. And also talking with Amy about the summer work experience and hopefully getting some helpers to get that going too.
Good, send the works. I like that.
Yeah, it's moving.
Good. Great. Anything else? We will work on that. Okay, back to the childcare needs survey. Okay, this is the first stab at this. Anya did a lot to get this, to do some research and help us with this draft. What do you think? Any suggestions? Are you able to find, where, what the reference that Sarah was referencing, which, which? Okay, if your childcare provider is a childcare center, who takes care of your child when the center is closed? Please explain. It doesn't look like there was a.
I think there's one in the next portion.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. It's really pretty general and basic, I think. What you have now, is it satisfying your needs, and what do you want? There is a range of fees that we just put together. I, I don't think any of this is harmful information. You know, for example, what hours do you typically need childcare? Before seven o'clock, after five o'clock, or different, some other hours in between. Seven to nine, nine to three, three to five. There's discussions about evening care and things, other part-time care. The one thing I just think we need to be sure that the childcare sustainability line item is coming from the Economic Enhancement Ordinance. The Economic Enhancement Ordinance is, to me, supplementing our economy by meeting a need. And that's, that's gonna be, that's why I wanted to do the survey, so that we could have some data in order to, we're gonna have a million dollars a year, and how are we going to distribute some of that? To meet the community need, because the Economic Enhancement Ordinance, you have to have childcare, you have to have stable childcare in order for our people to work, for our workforce to work. So that's the circle I think we should be trying to close here.
I just say, I just think, I know that they have cut childcare for after-school kids, and I think that is a huge need. Because by law, kids can't be home alone at that time.
Right.
So at that age, so I think it's a huge, huge need, and I think that needs to be worked out as well.
So what, what, what is the age that they, is it nine, ten?
I know that you don't make, I mean, just doing childcare or working in childcare, you don't make a ton of money on those kids coming from three thirty to five o'clock, but I don't know what the age is, but I mean, you can look it up.
Right, because right, right here, we have middle school, seventh grade and older, and I don't, I, I think that, I, I, I don't know, I think I'd almost take that out, because that's kinda saying that we're looking at taking care of people's kids from seventh grade to. Yeah.
I can look that up. But I know, just like, when I go to the pool at six thirty in the morning, before six thirty, there are kids wandering the streets that do not have childcare, and whether or not they would go to childcare, but they're out, and they're out all day long.
So, yeah, I'd be curious with a lot of actual sales.
Sarah had some good points. Was this shared with Arlington childcare at all?
No, we didn't share this with anyone yet. This is just a first stab on it, add it. Yep. Yeah.
Which is basically about, about a fourth grader.
Gosh, my kids, my parents should have been thrown in jail.
Some kids are adult at ten, and some kids are not adult at fifteen, so.
Yeah, the two, the two things that Sarah said, I think we should take into consideration and just make sure that we model the wording appropriately, according to her two suggestions. And then, what do you think about removing middle school, seventh grade and older?
I, I would remove that, and then I would say that on the grade school, I would say six to ten years old.
And not actually.
It's actually five years older in kindergarten, right?
Yeah.
Preschool, they're only three and four-year-olds when they're in preschool.
So fifth is tenth grade, fifth grade is ten years old. So if we just kept it consistent that way, once they're in school, just word it that way, I think K through fifth. Does that sound okay?
Is it fifth?
Yeah, fifth is ten. Yeah, I thought, I, when I was just a piece, I'd looked it up because of truancy concerns, and it was, I thought that it said at that time, you know, it was gray. It was like a reasonable age based on the child, but maybe it's not that way anymore. I thought it was. Without looking, I wouldn't know. Okay, anything else on here that, you know, we also thought it would be great to?
Change in this to?
Yeah, take grade school, K to fifth grade, and then removing middle school. And then finding out what babies are gonna be born. If we did this annually, we can, we can, you know, there's a question about will you need care, and will there be a child born? So that will give us maybe a heads up on trends too. And the childcare, like the last question, it says, please indicate what type of childcare you prefer, center, in-home, family member, friends, spouse or partner, after-school, care by older sibling. There are all kinds of childcare options that are completely acceptable. We're trying to solve it all. We're trying to find a way to get it solved in a variety of ways, I think. And figure out how we can best utilize that funding. Any other thoughts?
You took the sick one out? The sick child?
I thought you did, yeah.
Let's see, please indicate the type of care. So, and then we're removing the middle school guard too, on the gap range. Yeah, please indicate the type of childcare you would most like, most likely use. I guess let's talk about the sick childcare. What, what do you think about that? Because if they're not in home and they're not in a center, what if their spouse is taking care with them? I mean, I don't know, maybe we can take it out.
Yeah, because they can't take them to a facility.
Most people try.
Bring them to the facility?
Oh, it's the dose somewhat Tylenol. Till their fever comes back.
You know, like that's when grandma steps in or someone, you know, but it'd be, I think, I don't think it's bad information to gather.
That's when the parent has to go home and be with their sick child.
Some parents have jobs that they can't necessarily take time off work and they don't have PTO, some parents. Don't have a significant other or family members or are single moms, so you can't do that, so. People have to do what they have to do, whether it's right or wrong or anything.
And then.
And the problem is, we can't, we can't solve every problem.
No, no. The, the issue of when school is closed, we need to add that question. What do you do when school is closed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, that kind of in the snow days and stuff like that, you.
Yeah. Okay, school vacation.
School closure.
Please indicate the times you need childcare. Monday through Friday during work hours, Monday through Friday before or school, after school. Monday through Friday before and after school, evenings, weekends, holidays, school vacations and breaks. Yeah, I think it's.
You can just put slash closures after that.
Yeah. Okay. So we discussed, how can you do this survey so that we're sure that only one person completes it? A QR code is an idea. And that's what we talked about, if we can get that. Done, I think it's. Sir, do you want to take more time to think about this?
No, it's pretty.
We really, we didn't really reach out to the childcares themselves because this childcare plan to do their own survey. So um. What I see too is we could um. As we improve it and learn what could be better with the survey, we can make it better the next year, so start.
Start.
And then see where we go from there, okay? All right, are we ready to put it, make the changes and put it out? Okay. Okay, so we're just gonna send it out without the action of the court, huh? Okay. Sure. Okay, we're gonna uh move up. Seven point five. Consider approval of the intergovernmental agreement for Gillum County Soil and Water Conservation District for funding of services. To implement the John Day River Total Maximum Daily Load Implementation Plan. Come on down.
Hello.
Herbunders, district manager of Gillum County City.
And I am the right, the office manager at Gillum County City.
So I guess I can just.
Go ahead.
Little bit of history.
Yes, give us the history.
So yeah, uh. Just reminder, Gillum County is the designated management agency. For the TMDLs, the total maximum daily loads, you know. In their section of the John Day River Basin. Uh, I believe for the last five years, we've had an agreement with the county to implement. Uh, the plan for those TMDLs, which is. Uh, protecting water quality. Um, it's on riparian fences, uh planting trees, offsite watering facilities. And we're hoping today that the court would approve extending that, renewing that agreement. And we're here to.
Love to talk about three point seven. Three point seven. The district will provide assistance to support grant writing and permanent opportunities subject to available, available capacity. At district solace pressure.
Yes. So. Um, yeah, so basically, we are. Pretty much all we do is write grants um at the district, that's a big part of our skill sets. And um, we would like to help the county. Especially with natural resource type uh grant opportunities. Um, and then also, we would like to offer help with um like reviewing grant applications. It, there might not be in fields that we have expertise in, but since we have.
That's great.
Um, experience with just grant writing in general, we would get help um folks in the county do that as well.
Yeah. That's great. Yeah, and I, I think it protects you from getting overrun with commitments.
Yeah.
Because you have your own job to do, but it also will help us. In an area where we need some help. We, we don't want to miss opportunities if we have. Field set we can drop on.
Yeah.
So that's great.
Yeah, and then.
You're probably gonna be the first one to know when grants are coming down the pipeline, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess just a couple other. Uh, items that are in um the draft IGA would be the. Help um with any GIS or um mapping work um the county might need, um especially with the assessments office if needed. Um, we also have a fairly robust educational system for county schools, uh outdoor school. Um, we really. Uh, Oregon Watership Enhancement Board used to fund that type of work through the watershed, so they, they no longer do, so. Um, the county making. Um, so funding a male force to do that is really powerful. Um, and then also helping on the liberalized community, when we need department, um, we've been talking about. Uh, working on uh countywide um weed inventory.
Yes, good.
Mapping tool. Um, and then we'll talk a few less to see what kind of writing in the future.
Yeah, right. Good.
So, uh. The question I had was the seventy-five thousand. That's for twenty-five, twenty-six. Because.
Yeah, we have that, yeah, it will.
Because I, I couldn't find it, I couldn't find it in this one, they ran the wrong section.
Yeah, we have it.
Okay.
Under um. Is it under one ninety-nine or ninety-nine? Okay.
Ninety-nine.
It's under ninety-nine and we have.
Okay.
Been approved in the budget already.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah.
I just wanted to hear, didn't see it, so I was.
I'll find it for you. Go ahead and keep talking.
Yeah, and I guess just another, you know, touch more. A little bit on the MBL, um, just, I think the last time we gave an update. It's uh completely updated, the MBL implementation plan. Where counties require to do every five years. And we also do the annual reporting for new Q and um, which happens in December.
Right. I think. Cause my thoughts are. Have a um. Pretty uh. You're, you're very proactive and you are um going and getting funding, and I think. That's gonna help us. And this agreement is something that we absolutely have to have, so I think there's a, a good relationship and a trade-off there. And I think we need, we could use some assistance with the, the weed, um, the, the mapping and identifying the weeds and all of that, so it's perfect.
Well, I think the weed department used to have a grant writer.
Yeah.
Could help them.
Yeah, so. That would be great. So any other questions about this agreement?
I didn't.
Wish no weapons.
Are we approving this then?
Yeah. And there should be a. Oh.
I didn't see.
We don't have a briefing, right?
Um, I moved to approve the interm- intergovernmental agreement for funding and services. To implement the John Day River Total Maximum Daily Load Implementation Plan between Gillum County. And the Gillum County Soil and Water Conservation District.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Can I give a quick update?
Yes.
Just uh in regards to our billing, just yesterday, uh the Secretary of Ag uh made, put out a statement saying that they will not be closing any. FSA offices.
Good.
So that is.
Good news.
Good news. So I'll share that with you and, and thank you for your support.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point one, consider adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five oh six, a resolution adopting. This will be your twenty-six salary schedules, and that is under seven point one. And all of the salary schedules are listed and the resolution is on the back of the briefing page. Prepared by. Have any questions?
These are all the. Latest and current.
I moved to adopt the resolution number R twenty twenty-five dash oh six as presented.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright. Since seven point two, consider approval of capital investment grant funding recommendations. That were reviewed by the grant committee. And that is under seven point two. So we have three. Applications. Brooklyn, did you want to? Say anything before we? Start? And then you can kind of.
You have our recommendations that are in the briefing, I believe. Um, no, nothing beyond what our recommendations are.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions when you're?
So.
Questions or any other? So I, I just have, I question, how, how will we? How will we make that? Envision eye care. Maintain, I mean, for three years, I mean, how? I, I, we just put that, I think, in their agreement, and if they don't agree to it, then. They don't get their funding and, and it's just a pledge as well, so I don't think we would even write really. An agreement. So when they, when they sign this. Grant agreement for that money, it'll be. Yeah, well, then we, I don't remember what section it is, but within the guidelines of the agreement. It currently lists uh must maintain operations for one year after receiving funds, but we would just increase that to three years. And then it would just be on us to maintain that communication with her, and if after three years they're not in operation, request that fifty thousand dollars.
So did they come to Condon too, or just they came to Condon in Arlington, Bob?
Condon, Arlington, I think they were somewhere, they served somewhere forty to fifty individuals. They got classes for almost that same number of people. Um, they had a couple people that didn't show up in the northern, but everyone that signed up down in the south showed up and. They really appreciate that, and now they've also, I think, tied in with South County Health Center before, they were just there for school and Condon. So do they, then they come in? Sometimes a year or? Last year, I think it was just two or three times that they came out, but they're hoping to come out more often with this vehicle. Uh, because currently when they load up, they load all their supplies into the back of their car, and then they have to have a physical space that they can then unload everything, whereas with. This vehicle, um, it'd be more like a drive-through. Operation where those could come, so I think ideally would be inside, but if they need to, they could really set up wherever within the communities.
Like a small motorhome or something.
Yeah, it's like a, uh. Like one of those. Food truck vans, yeah, I don't know, like one of those. What is it called?
It's like a mobile draw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And again, it's just a pledge, they, they, you know, it's a lot of these capital investments are issued on reimbursement basis, or depending on the organization, we fund upfront. Um, but this is just a pledge with the stipulation that their remaining funds be secured prior to dispersment of Gillum County funds.
Do you, do you have a current? Number where we at, what we have left right now before we do any of this?
On it. Um, off the top of my head, two point four million, I think, if you're screening.
Okay.
Through the end of June.
Yeah, okay.
Budget at that, six million. In prior years.
Okay.
Just to call, I couldn't get into the. File, but then, yeah. So wanted me to log in and I wasn't sure what. Your county, it'll be your county. So I tried that and then it was like. That's nineteen question, I know the folks are having.
I was able to open mine.
Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't get on. Were you on the county laptop or on your? No, it's on my own. So I'll try, I'll try it on my county laptop.
Okay.
And if not, so we can.
Okay. Okay, I, um. Appreciate everything, all of the um. Work that the grant committee did, I support all of the recommendations. And. So the recommendation on the arts council is to fully fund with a stipulation of property taxes on, on the arts council building be brought current before grant fund. Distributed, that can be done, correct? Okay, and then city of Condon, the recommendation is fully funded with requests that a representative from Gillum County be part of the. Community pool planning process, is that acceptable to the city?
Fine, I've got to thinking this morning though, can you submit the name or names that you want on there, I need a little barrier.
Okay.
Um, the council will appoint a full committee.
Okay.
Probably two, so submit who you want.
You want to do it? Okay.
Okay. Yeah, just, Leah, can you just send me, you may have to read.
Okay.
I will forward it to the council.
Okay.
When the appointment.
I spent many summers in that whole.
Okay. And then, of course, the envision eye care for all recommendation pledge fifty thousand dollars with stipulations that remaining funds be secure prior to distribution. Excuse me, dispersment of Gillum County funds. Additionally, if funded, the grant agreement could be updated to reflect remaining three years. Of operating in Gillum County instead of the typical gun year, so. Do we, is there any further discussion on this?
Good.
Okay.
I'll move to approve capital investment grants for twenty-four, twenty-five as follows. Condon Arts Council in the amount of. One million dollars as recommended. And also. Uh, city of Condon. Seventy-five thousand dollars as presented. And the third one is the envision eye care. For the amount of fifty thousand with the stipulations as presented.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, just a point of clarification, these are twenty uh four, twenty-five funds. This is going to allow um. You know, a good, a good pool of money, two million dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six. Fiscal year, so.
Yeah, next, next year.
And we're not over ones, but.
Yeah, and.
Oh.
We're signing contracts with.
Yes. Right, and so the um. You know, this is the last. These, this is the last straw on this money, that's, that's one thing I want to just kind of. We, we want. Especially the capital investment. Funds, um, that the SIP agreements particularly leaves shepherd flat money that will. End in twenty-seven, um, that we can really show um some long-lasting projects for. Um, so. I, I support that.
And uh next year, with the change in the guidelines, the capital investments will just be two.
Two cycles. Yes.
Fall, once in the spring, of course, with always the opportunity to come outside of those time frames, but.
Right.
Instead of it being ongoing, it'll be two rounds.
Yeah.
So there's still money left in that.
Yes.
There's so many, and we have applications coming in, smaller applications coming in right now for the capital investments, so we'll, we have more applications before the end of this fiscal year.
For, oh.
This year.
The end of this.
For a.
Got it, okay.
For this fiscal year. From uh South Gillum RFPD for their turnouts.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, good.
Did Shannon get all the use?
I, I.
Oh, okay. I left a message, alright, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay. It took care of the salary schedules, correct?
Yeah.
It took care of the capital investment recommendation. Okay.
Thirty.
We're plus. Property, seven point three. Wow, we learned a lot about the grain lab. In the last couple of weeks. And so just to let you know that. Four or five of us went. We could go Monday. And opened every cupboard and looked and. There were things plugged in still. There was grain stored inside, there was grain stored outside, there was, that was. It was.
Was there rodents?
There was not one sign, and I thought this is an excellent advertisement for. Our rodent control, first, there was not one, there was homestead bugs.
Cause I thought with outside silo storage that's across.
Yeah, no, yeah.
This whole thing would be.
Oh, so we, we got all the boxes out, all the grain inside the building is out. We, a lot of it was not savable, a lot of the things in the cupboards because um they were plastic, brittle. Those types of things, um, but we identified all of the surplus property that is there, the mill. There was some interest, and so we took a video and you sent the video. There was some interest and so we took a video and you sent the video of it running. Um, so I don't know if that, what's going to come of that, but what we're going to do is we're going to put all of the equipment on the surplus, um, property site to sell. And, um, we also had, we contacted the schools because there was science equipment like beakers and test tubes and things like that. In the covers. So we contacted Arlington and Condon schools and we also contacted four H. As well as senior, or senior mills regarding some mixers and blenders and some cooking type things. Um, one of the items is on the surplus list is a, as a dough cheater that I thought might, um, get some interest because it's, um. A restaurant might be interested in that. And then there's a convection oven and some other, the mill, the big, the mill is a, a big one. Um, so we're going to try, take it in steps. Get rid of all the items. It is not really in that bad of shape. The building isn't. There's some minor repairs inside and there's some repairs that need to be done on the roof. Which. We're working on that right now. Um, backing up to the economic development administration and what it's going to take to get out from under the covenant. We've received a release letter or, um. Would you call it a release letter or a approval of for us to move forward?
Yes.
So. You know, we contacted them way back, maybe even last fall to start this. Okay, what are we going to need to do? And there was some unknowns on their end. They have contacted their legal counsel and although. We went ahead and went to our legal counsel and got a release of covenant. They want some modifications to that. So their legal and our legal will talking and it, it's, it should be fairly quick. They just needed that, um, religious exemption and the non discrimination exemption. And, and I think it'll be fairly, fairly quick. We need to have internet to that building. So, um, we contacted, um, Windwave. It runs right by.
Yeah.
Um, so contacted Windwave about that. Um, I also had a meeting with Avangrid who is interested.
They used for internet before that.
It was a, a tower that bounced off frontier tellnet. Um, from what I'm told, it was never good, solid internet. IVR went to fiber because it was so unreliable. So, um. What was I, oh, Avangrid is interested in leasing the east side of the industrial park for leading juniper two B's parts. Um, which will be, that, that piece of ground will be up in January of twenty six. But I also mentioned this building to them. I don't know if they'd be interested in not, in it or not. So I think that covers kind of everything that's going on with the grain lab and what it needs a good cleaning and, um. Maintenance has said they have a company that can come in and clean it. Um, but it's, it's pretty good building.
So do we, do we, is, or is it the, the mill there? As far as the, I mean, do they have like bait boxes outside or?
Yeah, we do. We do also. Yeah, we do too. There was bait boxes all around this and I guess my point is that they were doing their job.
Yeah.
They were definitely doing their job.
I thought was.
Oh, and then there's a Connex box outside and it's full of grain buckets. So. Nathan came down and looked, he's, oh, contact Jordan. So I contacted Jordan Mailey. Jordan Mailey's going to take them off because that, take them away. There's a hundred and fifty buckets in there. Um, but they were part of the original vision, which we had to research the original vision. Of the grain lab, which you probably know is premium wheat, marketing premium wheat. So that's what they were testing for is. A market for wheat.
Yeah, this one, they did that whole plateau farm.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh huh, right. So we had to explain to EDA what the history of it was and how, you know. You know, what happened basically and what our vision is for the future. And so with a vision and future, we just said. Um, you know, economic development opportunities are upon us. This is a way to take in a building that you invested in, that the federal government invested in and take it. Take it to another direction that maybe wasn't the original vision, but would still help us, um, with what we're trying to do in the county. So.
Anyway. And I did tell you, I, um, I reached out to, um. Northwest Grain Growers and I have not heard anything back, but I, I'll maybe follow up with another email to.
So with this equipment there, if it doesn't move.
Yeah.
What do we want to do?
Well.
Store it somewhere or we, we, I mean, we have.
Well, we're going to have, there's a couple of different directions we could go. I think what we should do is see if it'll sell and you know, the, the. Surplus site is national, right? And so. The people I've talked to said. You will probably get rid of it, but if we don't. We should have the Connex box. We could put the stuff in or decide if it's, you know, we've valued all of it the best we could and there's a lot of it that. Doesn't, hasn't retained its value. It's obsolete now. Because this is twenty years old.
I was thinking we have a chance to, we don't want to miss out.
Right.
Yeah.
No, we'll get it out of there and I think we'll have that. Well, the box has about half space in it. We could put, it's mostly, um. Black, uh, tabletop stuff, wouldn't you say, Anya? Most of it is things that would fit on a counter. They're not big.
There's probably five pieces that are standalone.
Right.
Yeah.
The cheater, the convection oven, the mill, what else are big?
But there's two other things. I don't even know what they are.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah. So we're going to do what we can to get it, get it.
The Terminator?
No, yeah. Looking at my list. Yeah, but we had to get, we had this old inventory. Luckily we found and then Nathan had to say, oh yeah, that's what that is and identify it all. And it was, it was an interesting process. It was kind of fun, actually.
Like throw it out there to that Connex box?
Uh huh.
Room department or somebody else in the county can't use it in circumstances.
Okay.
Just so it's not a problem.
Right.
Thinking is part of the rent.
Right. And I was thinking too, we don't have much stor-, Gillum County doesn't have much storage. However. You're thirty some miles away, forty miles away. Is that convenient? I don't know. But. But yeah, we can surplus that too at some point. Okay, so that kind of led into a big conversation, but it was a big, big part of what we did this month, huh? Okay, so we have the, uh, resolution declaring the equipment surplus.
I moved to approve the resolution twenty twenty five dash oh seven, declaring county property located at the green lab as surplus as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, um, that's everything and. All right, announcements and next meeting. Um, our next meeting is in Arlington and it is May twenty first.
Yes.
All right, um. The walls of the bus barn are up. That's exciting. I'd say it might be ahead of schedule. Yeah, so that's, that's exciting. The B grant, the fiber grant, uh, the, uh, grant is due May twentieth and catalyst, um. Is helping us with that. They're, they will submit that for us. Um. Working on waste management's conditional use for, well, the host fee agreement that I need, um, Stephanie Case to, to talk about because. Waste management suggested some things be taken out of the host fee agreement and put in the CPU, but we're going to look at all that before we. Agree to anything. Um. I'm going to the cemetery board for the IGA for the community service fee that you approved here today and that'll take care of that. Then it can go to Business Oregon for approval. Um. That required going to board meetings. First I had to introduce the, the IGA and then. So each of those board members and code for, it board, board meetings and then go back for approv- approval. So that was. Several trips. Working on a IGA with the school districts for dual college credit program. What the plan is. Upon approval of you is sixty thousand dollars and this would come from our discretionary, um, SIP funds. If one school district doesn't use. It wouldn't be thirty and thirty. I had a call with, um, Michelle Gare and Sean Troutman, Michelle Condon, Sean Troutman Arlington. And they're just not going to know which districts are going to use the money. So it would be agreement between Gillum County and the school two, two school districts. That if one district doesn't use. All of it, that it would be available to the other if they have a need. So up to sixty thousand, not a flat sixty thousand and. I'm going to talk to them about doing it on a reimbursement basis as long as that works for them so that we're sure that we are. That we have kids enrolled. I think that's a good investment in education for us to. To do. I've been on the Eastern Oregon caucus calls, which is legislative updates and those are very, um, informative. We're down to, I shouldn't say the end, but Wolf Compensation. It seems to have, um, the traction it needs. That Senate bill seven, seven, seven. Um, problem is cattle prices are high and the pot of money is low. So, um, it, it's a start to some compensation, um. Reform. Um, wildfires and mapping is the other big issue and then fair funding. Um, seems to have traction as well. Mike McLean, Senator Mike McLean is ways and means and he is someone, the Fair Board could contact to, um. Provide a letter of support or find out when the hearings are if you're interested in that. So that's looking good, he said, they said. So.
They might get the money that they were promised.
Right. Right. Um, there's a QRP training. That is a suicide prevention training. It, QRP stands for question, persuade, refer. And that's next Wednesday and that's happening here at the courthouse and Amy Nation coordinated that. Um, if you're interested. Contact her. The Alphali Ridge groundbreaking is May nineteenth at five o'clock. If you even want to go to that, I'm going to go.
I think I'll be there.
We have county college coming up this next week. Um. Frontier nine one one budget was approved by the budget committee. Um, I went to a volunteer appreciation dinner for transportation, which was great. Jeremy Green, our attorney, came to the courthouse and met, came on site and met everyone and his team. So that was a good. You know, it's always nice to meet who you're talking to. Yes, talking to, um, met with John Anderson with Brooklyn regarding insurance and he'll be coming with us with the proposal. For next fiscal year and our sheriff is working on court security courtroom remodel assessment. And virtually what that will be is. I probably should have had him talk about this when he was here, but it'll be coming. But it's, I think that. Um, the judge's bench will be over there. The jury box will be over here and then the clerk will be over there. It's, uh. Security measures. It's, it's for safety. So, yeah. And it would all be funded hopefully by, uh, court security funds. So that's all I have.
So I, um. Met with Daylene last week and in June I'll be doing. A, I have to do this for OHA. It's a fiscal, um, review. So I will look at the program elements and. The, the bills they have, you know, not all of them, but I'll cherry pick and then I have to fill this out. So it's, uh.
Good job.
Must have one of you guys want to volunteer to do that. Okay. So that's coming up and I sat through the Norcore, um, budget. Um, and. They were going to have an additional meeting because, um. I think it was, uh, one point some million dollars that. Uh, Hood River. They, cause they did a ten percent. So they were. They're proposing one point seven million dollars and he. Is not thinking that Hood River will. Approve that.
That's ten percent. What do you think?
And they're not even sure about Wasco County. So if they do, if that happens, then they're going to have a big.
So the.
Deficit. But I did ask them, I said, what was cola that you were, they were promising the staff and they were doing a five percent. I told them that we were only doing a three and a half. So. They may have to, I mean, they have to go back and consider. Their cola increases.
Right.
But, um, that's the main things I got out of that.
Be interesting to know what that number is, just that one percentage difference. Yeah.
You said, oh, sorry.
And I, of course, we've already approved our budget at, but it may be that Norcore comes in with less, you know?
And that's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
So Hood River, the two biggest ones, Hood River and Wasco did not go for the ten percent either?
Well, they. They weren't really. Volunteering.
Yeah.
Cause they, I don't think they have went through their budget staff. Um, but they're at two point two. So. So if you take those two, two point two and one point seven.
Yeah, I knew they were the larger one.
Yeah.
Cause last year they were one point. Six and one point, oh, one point six and one point six. So. Wasco counties will be quite a bit more. I just, maybe last year they. Back. Uh, backed off on Hood Rivers.
I just don't know how that's, this is going to be able to keep going like it is though, because. We're just meeting the requirements and they're unable to fix building. I just don't know. I don't know. It's going to have to be a taxing district, I think someday, but.
Yeah.
How do you get there? So.
Well, they're going to have to definitely revisit, you know, I don't know. I, I without looking at the budget early close, I don't know how much there. Cause everything's all over the place. You know, their staff is not in one spot on the budget. So, yeah, but. I, I don't think most, um, entities aren't doing the larger cola increases like we did, like. I think the first year I was on the court, we did the one large one because.
Yes.
Everything.
Because it would, because the cost of living. Uh, yeah. You know, just following that, that cost of living.
Yeah.
So kind of gives you a guide.
Well, I think they still had some positions that they had not filled too. That was helping, but. What else was, I'm going to pick it up. So.
Well, they're going to have to trim somewhere and usually. You know, employees is a big part. Although they, they probably need them, that's so they can run the jail.
Is there anything, Grant?
Um, yeah, I just had just a couple of things. Um. Like I said, I met, visited with Shannon. Topic about the, uh, fire district a little bit. And, uh, of course ended up with visiting with Casey about, anyway, we talked about the MS also. And then, uh, I finally got a chance to go up to the early learnings. Take a tour, visit with Haley a little bit. They were. I, I didn't really have a lot of time spent with her, but, uh, um. Uh, and their construction they have going on. Um, this Friday I had a career meeting. It's going to be held in Boardman and County College coming up, of course, and then, uh, I still going to see if I can actually get with, uh. Alan Anderson and.
Hmm.
OWS.
Uh huh.
Just kind of give a couple of dates on where we're at with the bypass and, um. Oh, I'm still, uh, working on trying to get information on, uh. Some right away stuff.
Oh.
I think that I would, I'd like to get some information and present to the court to see what they think and, and, uh. But anyway, that's, that's on my list. And this is, now we have.
Like for, like to amend our application and kind of look through some research on if we have them.
Well, I was, I was going by, uh. Sean with Avangrid. He said some of them are. Couple stages.
Uh huh.
And he said, and charge for.
Right.
I think we're.
Oh, you mean Sean Bell?
Sean Bell, excuse me. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, he's, he's like. We don't even charge and that's kind of weird. So.
Yeah.
I don't know. But anyway, uh, hopefully I'll have some information and.
And I think that is. Times have changed. The right away was used for utilities that, and now there's other uses. So now it's time for us to look at a. Another layer of.
Well, I, I think the other thing too is the way, you know, it, maybe it worked before what we have, but, um. I think. That the roadmaster is ready to make a recommendation to the court. I think, I think we need to get a little involved a little sooner.
Yes.
But.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's, the way it is, he can authorize it, you know, I, and nothing is doing anything, but I just think that with everything going on.
Yeah.
I think the court needs to be a little more involved.
On the right ways. Yeah.
Anyway.
Good.
I'll get some.
Yeah, because in reality. You know, ten years down the road, they're not going to blame whoever was the roadmaster. They're going to blame the court.
Yeah.
That's the best stocks at the court.
It does. Oh, yeah. Is there anything else?
No, I just, two more sessions.
Two more.
Was on the agenda for next time?
It's natural resources.
Oh.
Mm hmm.
Actually, that was, I, that was pretty interesting.
Isn't that right? Natural resources?
I, I don't recall. I, I don't recall, I don't remember.
You made it through the taxation and assessment one?
Yes. I really liked the, we went to the Oregon State Hospital, we didn't get to go in, but we toured the museum and the grounds and uh, the the executive director of AOC, she worked there, and I think her husband was a
Yeah.
there too, so she had like stories from the hospital, and she, it was so fascinating.
Did the two little um sisters that were lived on the thing, and they are in the museum, right?
Yes, they were wonderful, yeah, they loved growing up there.
Yep. And now they're there, now they're back there touring people around.
Yes.
On their little stories.
They said, look at these beautiful grounds, this was a childhood that we loved, and they both are in, I mean, one's a doctor, the other's a RN, I believe.
Yeah.
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 So, okay, no further business, meeting's adjourned.